Good evening. We want to welcome you to the Halifax County Board of Commissioners meeting on this June 16th, regular meeting. This is our second meeting this month. Thank each one of you for being here. Tonight, we're going to be very specific in talking about the budget. That's the main purpose of this meeting, along with a few other things, but the thrust of it is about the budget. As I said, the meeting will officially come to order. We're going to be led in invocation by Commissioner Gary Redden. After that, we're going to do the pledge of allegiance in unison. And those who wish to join us at this time, please stand.
Good evening. As we gather tonight for this meeting of the county commissioners, let us take this moment to reflect on the responsibility we've been entrusted with to serve our community with integrity, transparency, and purpose. We are here not only to hear the voices of our residents and consider matters that affect their daily lives, but also to carry out one of our most important duties, which is to review and arrive at approving the county budget. May our decisions tonight be guided by fairness, fiscal responsibility, and a sincere commitment to the public good. Let us proceed with focus, respect for one another, and a shared goal of building a stronger or equitable Halifax County. Thank you.
Our full allegiance through the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will turn our attention to the adoption of the agenda. I trust that my colleagues have had an opportunity to review the agenda. If it's your pleasure, I would so entertain a motion for the adoption.
We'll put adoption of the agenda.
Motion made by Vice Chair Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Webb. In a further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Okay, the next item is the conflict of interest statement. In accordance with the Halifax County Board of Commissioners' rules of procedure, excuse me, in the North Carolina General Statute Section 153A-44, it is the duty of every member present to bear all matters coming before the board unless there is a conflict of interest as determined by the board by law. Does any Commissioner member have a known conflict with interest with respect to any matters coming before us tonight? Commissioner Silver.
Yes, sir.
No conflict.
No conflict.
No conflict?
No conflict.
Madam Cluck, let the record so reflect that the six commissioners present do not have conflict with any matters coming before us tonight.
Yes, sir.
Item one on the agenda deals with agenda items, and item A, fiscal year 2025 through '26 budget adoption. We'll hear from our illustrious county manager, Ms. Leah Denton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening to all of you. On your agenda tonight, it's the primary reason for this agenda is the final adoption of your 2025-2026 budget. This is the result of about 10 months of preparation, both on your part and on staff's part, to bring you a balanced budget that addresses the needs of this county to carry our services into the next fiscal year. You had your budget work session in April, formal presentation of the budget in May, and your public hearing earlier this month, and there were no speakers. The ordinance and the fee schedule have no further changes from when it was presented back in May, and we're just ready for you to adopt it, and we'll take July off and get back on it in August for '26-'27.
Okay, you've heard information coming from our county manager. Are there any comments or questions at this point? If not, I believe the county got to be real specific about the adoption of this budget. It's got to be made in a second. Of course, that information goes into the minutes as such, the commissioner made the motion as well as seconding it. Okay, any questions or comments? If not, we need to adopt the fiscal year '25-'26 budget and fee schedule.
I move for the adoption of the fiscal year '25-'26 budget and fee schedule.
Okay, let the record reflect that that motion was made by Commissioner Shannora Richardson-Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Sandra Webb. In a further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay.
All right. Next item on the agenda, and just before we move to the next item, I do want to make the comment in regards to the budget. I do want to thank Ms. Denton and her staff, all the departmental heads, for working so hard to bring this budget before us, and it took us one work session to do it. I've been a commissioner for a while, as all of you know, and sometimes we've gone twice, sometimes we've gone three times to do it. And that's not being critical, but I think that that's also shows that, you know, it shows a lot of efficiency on her staff's part, on our part, and, you know, I just want to say to Ms. Denton and her staff, job well done. To my colleagues, commissioners, I do appreciate all your hard work as well, because that's one of the functions of the, of the tree in December, is to give staff, you know, direction as relates to the budget from the commissioners level, and we do that every year, even though going back to when Ms. Denton said it, it starts earlier than that with them. So again, I commend each one of you for a job well done. Commissioners, if you all don't have any comments, unless you have comments, we're going to move to the next item, but I will listen to the comments if you don't have any at this time. Don't have to, just ask it. Okay? Not being in it, we'll move to the next item. Item B on the agenda, public hearing, conveyance of land for economic development. Just before I read a statement and ask for a motion to open the public hearing, we're going to hear from Ms. Kathy Scott, who is our hard-working economic development director. We were at a session not long ago, come up, Miss Scott, and Commissioner Redden and myself, and it was an economic development session, and really, Commissioner Redden can attest to this, you know, she was called on so much by the instructors and had all the answers she could really, she could be the teacher of the class, no problem.
Age-old default.
Yeah, but it was a very good class, and I learned a lot. Ms. Scott, we'll help you at this time in regards to the public hearing, conveyance of land for economic development.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members. We're here tonight to conduct a public hearing in relationship to the conveyance of the D simple end worth in 698.79 acres that is owned by Halifax County. In accordance with General Statute 1587-1D, we are required to have a public hearing to consider conveyance of land for economic development purposes. This real property is located at Highway 561 in the Halifax Township, and is the remaining property in the Halifax public park. The board has determined that the fair market value of this property is $2,095,600, and in pursuant to General Statute 1587.1D2, we need to take into account, you as a board need to take in account prospective tax revenues over the next 10 years from the investments that would be constructed on the property and contractually bond the company to make those improvements within five years as a condition of conveyance. And this public hearing, you will be required to make a finding that the project will stimulate the local economy, promote business, and result in the creation of a substantial number of jobs, permanent jobs that pay at or below the annual average wage. And I do have a few big groups for the public to make sure we make note of. Number one, that the company that is proposed for this project will invest a total of $45,550,000 every five years in real property improvements and equipment and machinery purchases. The amount of consideration with prospective tax revenues over the next 10 years resulting from these improvements are equal to or greater than the fair market value identified in the conveyance of the property. The company will create 20 new permanent direct jobs in Halifax County, all of which will pay wages that exceed the average weekly wage for the county, and the county's current average weekly wage is $823 a week. And the proposed average weekly wage to be paid by the company is $1,007 a week, so a significant increase in the average weekly wages to be paid for those improvements. You will be making a finding, or you hopefully will make a finding, that this project will stimulate the local economy, promote business, and result in the creation of a substantial number of jobs in Halifax County that pay at or above the average weekly wage. And that information is being offered legally by the company that is also pursuing state incentives for their project, and so we're not in a position that we can name the company at this point in time, but as soon as we are able to do so, we will. We make the project that you as a board will be proud to have in our hearing, and that will serve the citizens of Halifax County as well. That's the information I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Scott. Just before I open the public hearing up, I do need to read a statement. In the opening statement for the public hearing, read as follows. Public hearings are held for the purpose of receiving comments from the public regarding a specific subject. Those persons designed to speak will give their name, their physical address, their phone number, and the name of the organization they are speaking for, if that's applicable. We request that each speaker limit their comments solely to the issue at hand and not direct comments towards specific individuals. In the interest of time, please do not repeat facts or issues covered by previous speakers. If you wish to comment, you should express your opinion on the subject matter, give the board an understanding of whether you favor or oppose the issue being discussed. The Halifax County Board of Commissioners appreciates the opportunity to listen to the citizens of this great county, and we respectfully request that the above guidelines be followed. At this time, commissioners, I would ask for a motion to open for the public hearing to discuss conveyance of land for economic development per the economic development director advising the zone. What is your pleasure? Motion made by Commissioner Silver, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Barrett. In a further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Okay, you've heard the reading of the opening statement, you've heard information coming from our economic development director. Anyone who wishes to come speak, please do so at this time, and please follow my instructions.
Seeing that no one is coming to make public comment, I move that the floor be closed.
Okay, motion made by Vice Chair Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Webb. In a further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Okay, all right, next item, item C, budget amendments. Our finance director, Ms. Duncan, morning lady. Where's your U-Haul, Ms. Duncan?
Pardon?
Morning lady, where's your U-Haul?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I don't think I'll come to the second month of meetings without a budget amendment reviewing, but we have six budget amendments for cooperative extension, budgeting additional revenues that they will time use for the end of the month. So I can get order approval for camp fees, extension agent programs, and then the four A. program.
Okay. All right, any questions or comments, commissioners? Okay, she's before us regarding amendments, which is any information that you have. I believe there's six of them, right?
There's six.
Right, okay. What is your pleasure in regards to those amendments?
One second.
Yes, sir. Okay. You okay? All right. Okay, any other questions or comments? If not, we do need a motion for the approval of the budget amendments.
I'll make the motion.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Barrett, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Davis. In a further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Thank you. Makes me children very happy.
Okay, yeah, that is great. Next item is the action on the public hearing, conveyance of land for economic development. Ms. Scott, did you have anything further you wanted to tell us about that?
Yes, sir. In your package, you have a resolution authorizing the conveyance of land. As per your consideration of that resolution, so that's the General Statute one fifty-eight seven dot one, that's true. You also have a draft economic development agreement that we have proposed, that Goldenly has prepared for your review, and I'll let you address that.
Okay, let me ask you a question just before I turn around and address the economic agreement. There were two questions I got. First of all, item four under the resolution authorizing the conveyance of real property says, this approval and authorization will be null and void if the company is not executing a middle or final version to the economic development office by five o'clock today?
Actually, it should be July sixteenth.
It's July sixteenth.
Oh, I'm sorry, July sixteenth, okay, I'm sorry. Alright, okay. Alright, I'm a month behind.
That's alright.
Alright.
I'm a month ahead, so.
Okay. And the second question I got is, do we need to do these separate as far as the motions?
No.
Do not?
No, sir. There's only one action for you today, and that is to adopt the resolution. The resolution states that you've been presented with a copy of a proposed economic development agreement.
Okay, alright.
It may not be, in final form, may not be exactly as proposed, but should be substantially as proposed. I'll speak, I'll let Kathy speak more to the last part of the resolution, item four that you referenced, and Kathy, why don't you speak to that now about why we're imposing that deadline on getting this done?
As you know, we have some funding that has been provided by Goldenly to build a shell building.
Right.
Goldenly wants us to move quickly. They are working with us because we have an opportunity that they support to give us time to extend those funds for shell building construction. So they've given us a deadline, and we're going to pass that along. Shouldn't be any issues to remove this project.
Okay, thank you. So going back to the economic development agreement, that is not something you have to adopt or approve. The resolution authorizes the chairman and other county staff to execute the agreement once it's in final form, and it also authorizes the chair to determine if the final form of the agreement is substantially similar to what's been presented to you today, that's to keep us from having to come back here and have approval on something that had some typographical changes or something such as that. I do want to point out to you, and you may have questions about it on hearing and everything, but mainly, I wanted you to be aware of the restrictions and limitations that we've placed on the property. Those are listed on page, starting bottom page two and the top of page three of the economic development agreement. And in particular, what we wanted you to see was that we propose in the deed a restriction providing that no aspect to a particular kind of waste management, that sort of thing, that would be in the restrictions, and also, we would remove this property from the restrictive covenants that we have on the corporate part now, so the property would be free and clear of those restrictive covenants. We've got some farm leasehold interests that are gonna remain in place until the end of the year, and we have some provisions of our property taxes if this closing were to take place before G I one, it has some property tax implications for the new owner of the property. Don't know if that's gonna happen or not, but it's there for that reason.
Okay.
In any event, this is fairly straightforward, otherwise, we convey the property, and in exchange, we expect the company to develop the property over the next several years so that we receive the property tax investment that we have to get back from them in order to justify the conveyance.
Alright, Commissioners, you've heard the information from the economic development director and our attorney in regard to action on the public hearing about the conveyance of land for economic development. What is your pleasure? Yes, sir, Commissioner Barrett?
I guess Kathy's included, you can chime in as well. So I see on here, I guess we got some farmland leased out there?
Correct.
Alright, so in this agreement, we just agreed to prorate the rent from the farmer, right? And we're giving him the land for a dollar. Why can't we take, can't we work in the agreement where we get all the rent? I mean, it would seem fair to the taxpayers of this county to get all the rent for the farmland for a year, I mean, I know it's not a lot of money, but it's a little bit of money, I hate. Well, give them six hundred acres for a dollar. To be sure, we can put a little bit more money in the county coffe here.
So that the public isn't confused, we're not giving them the property for a dollar?
I know.
Okay.
I totally agree.
And if they don't develop the property and add to the tax base of the county, the property's gonna come back to us. Your call on prorating the rent or not, and then we go back to them, negotiate whether that's satisfactory to them or not, I don't know. Typically, you prorate rent, you know.
I know, and I realize this is standard, I mean, it's a standard thing, I'm just saying is, in this situation, I, my opinion is, I think we could ask for the rent for years. I don't think they'll balk at it.
One thing that may happen, I'll add to this, if the company that we're talking about is wanting to move forward with some of their development on some part of the farm's property, then the farm tenant will have to be compensated for that loss of either the crops that couldn't be harvested or the cost that went into, depending on where we are in the season. And we would require that if the company pulls some land out of farming during the year, that they make that compensation back to the farmer. Which is probably another reason why we were talking about prorating the rent, if you're gonna pull land out of production and you're gonna be responsible for compensating the farmer for that, then it sort of makes sense that we're prorating the rent from the farm lease, but I'm only here to do your bit.
I understand, and I guess, my question would be to you, is there any, I mean, we can, we can put that in a contract that we get, or a agreement, or whatever we call this thing.
Oh, we can put that in.
We can put it in there that we receive the rent for the.
We can do that.
Okay.
I wouldn't expect that if we do that, you're probably gonna get something coming back from the company about, well, who's gonna make the reimbursement to the farmer if we pulled forty acres out of production before the end of the, you know, the season? This lease terminates this year, it's a three-year lease, it terminates end of last year anyway. But, no, we can do that, short answer.
So, I mean, Mr. Chairman, that's my feeling, I think, I think this company's getting a really good deal from the county, and I don't see why we can't, I know it's a lot of money, and I can't, I can't believe we should be something, should gum up the works, I can't believe it. Do you have that feeling it might gum up this whole?
I think, stop guessing sometimes, how companies are, but I think we're making a reasonable price, so. And there's a flip side to it, like Glenn said about the damages to the crops and that stuff, I think we just need to get a better share.
Commissioner Silver?
Yeah, Chairman Roberts, that wouldn't, would this change anything on who's gonna be responsible if they crop got damaged from construction or anything by?
Um, so what we have in place right now is just what's in our farm lease agreement with the farmer, and that is, if any property, and they go into this lease knowing that it's economic development property, but a standard condition that we have always had in farm leases on economic, on all of our farm leases, is that if we require them to come out of production during the farm year, the farmer will be compensated, depending on how, if we're, if we're at harvest and it has to come out, they'd be compensated for the loss of the crops, if it's, I forget that they, prior to a certain date, it's compensation for whatever went into planting and cultivating, you know, depending on which time of the growing season we're in, that we would be required to make that reimbursement to them. Okay, so if we're just looking at our farm lease, the county as the landlord is required to make compensation to the farmer if they have to stop producing crops on some portion or all.
In the past, you know, we've always tried to work it with the company to schedule their construction to start, I mean, a deal's not done until they sign the agreement, so they have steps they have to take to mobilize their project, you know, to catalyze their architectural plans, build and start building and construction, so, I mean, here we are on this July, we've only gotten three, four more months before whatever will be cultivated.
Right.
So we're, I think we can probably work it out.
And so what I've got in this agreement, in the proposed agreement, is that if the company decides to terminate the lease as to some or all of the farmland, that they will be responsible for making the compensation, but also having that same paragraph that we prorate the rent between the parties. So it's all in that same sub-paragraph A you see there in the agreement.
My question was, if I was receiving the rent, will it change, make us responsible any at that point instead of?
Not the way I drafted the agreement, no, sir.
Okay.
I personally feel that maybe that might gum up the agreement. I feel like what they, in years to come, if this works out, their investment in this property will be more than what we stay in the game by raising the prices for the farmland.
Okay, anyone else, any other comments? Okay, if there aren't any other comments, you know, the request is, you know, that we adopt the attached resolution authorizing the conveyance of the real property held for economic development purpose pursuant to General Statute one five eight seven point one, but it's your pleasure to do whatever this board wishes to do.
I move for the board adoption of the attached resolution authorizing the conveyance of the real property held for the economic development purposes.
Okay, motion made by Vice Chair Davis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Reddick, in a further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, issue now, Ms. Madam Clark.
Thank you so very much.
Okay. Alright, now, beyond the other business, you have a letter in your packet of information from Pastor Dr. Florine Bell. She approached me recently about her church service, New Hope Apostolic, apostolic, I guess how you pronounce the church, for twenty-eight years, and then as senior pastor for thirteen years. She wrote a letter from the county in reference to that, and that was what I had Clark to, actually, I had the deputy county manager to draft it and send it to Pastor Dr. Florine Bell. Anyway, I need your approval for that.
I'll next.
Alright, motion made by Commissioner Barrett, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Reddick, in a further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, any other business? I know, Ms. Denton, you got just a couple things you wanna say on the other business.
If you're ready for me?
Yes, ma'am.
Historically, the chairman and the manager, and I don't have the pleasure of doing it the last two years, go on the local radio programs and discuss the budget after it's adopted. So tomorrow morning, Chairman Brown and I will be on the Maverick Talk Show at eight ten is our time to talk about the budget, and then, just due to some scheduling things, we'll be on Tony Burnett's show on July ninth at six o'clock. Just had to work through some scheduling with him, but it'll be the same information, but we're gonna go on both of those and talk about the budget and its adoption by you all this evening.
Okay. Alright, any questions or comments about that? Do y'all have anything else on the other business?
I know I got a comment, but. Again, as I told you earlier, we work from the budget.
Uh huh.
I'm very interested in next year's budget and start early, that we make sure that county employees get what we consider a living wage of nearly eighteen dollars an hour. As I listened to Ms. Scott tonight report about that job, eight twenty-three weekly average comes to twenty dollars and fifty-seven cents. If we want to retain good employees, we need to meet that goal ourselves of what the average salary is. So I'm charging all the Commissioners to be thinking about that next year. We want good employee, good people to live here, we're gonna have to pay for it.
Okay, any other comments about that? I don't disagree with you, Commissioner Silver, on that, but I do know that when we had that compensation study this past year, we did fall below what was recommended for our lower-paid employees, and our staff did recommend a higher salary. I can't remember exactly where it ended up, it was twenty-seven to twenty-eight thousand, but staff recommended no person in Halifax County make under thirty thousand dollars, and that's where we are with that, and I think that was a huge step. Not disputing what you're saying, but I just want you to know, some steps have been taken to move in a good direction with salaries.
And I applaud you guys, I looked at this and I just want to keep the momentum going.
Okay. And if I'm wrong or something, Ms. Denton or Ms. Wells, correct me, please. Is that right?
That's correct. What we'll do is we'll look at our revenue projections later this year and start making projections about what the budget can afford as far as a raise, and because we just did a salary study, if you're to raise the minimum, say our minimum right now is fifteen dollars an hour, if you're to raise it to eighteen dollars an hour, then you have to raise everybody else up too, because then that creates compression. And so that was what the salary study addressed, was, some of the things it addressed was compression, so if you move the lowest hourly rates up that much, you're gonna have to raise everybody up that much. We can come up with some projections and see what that would cost, but that would be, it would be substantial, I can tell you.
Explain compression to me.
Okay, so if you have someone making fifty dollars an hour, and then you have someone who's been, who's been here a year, because they just came in, everybody comes in at a minimum, depending on the position, okay, making fifteen dollars an hour, and you have another position, and it doesn't really matter what it is, they could have been in their position for two, three, or four years, and they're at eighteen dollars an hour, if you move up the person in a different position to the same level as the eighteen dollar an hour position without moving them up, that creates compression.
Does that mean?
That becomes a retention issue.
But does that mean that every employee has to get a raise? I guess that's the question I'm asking.
I think it would be very difficult if you did not do across the board even increases at this point without going through another study, because that puts staff in a very subjective position to decide which positions get what, and that creates a lot of, a lot of issues internally.
I guess my concern would be, so if someone making a hundred thousand dollars would have to get a raise too because somebody making fifteen dollars an hour got a two dollar raise?
At that level, it's not gonna be that big of a difference, it's more about the ones that are closer to that level.
Understood, okay, understood.
It creates compression at that level.
Understood.
Could I say something, I've been involved in, sometime we have what you do find pastas you call red line, that many people at top management actually can be paid by young what their peers in neighboring places can be, and this red line sometime can happen to, it doesn't mean everybody has to get a raise.
Understood.
Okay, anyone else? Alright, any other comments on the other business? Anyone got anything else? If not, we don't have any closed session, I just do it.
Yes, sir.
Okay, alright. Okay, I think all y'all gonna lose their debt tonight.
They had a bet going on, that's inside joke, y'all. But, anyway, can I get a motion to adjourn to July seventh, twenty twenty-five, regular meeting at nine thirty AM?
Alright, motion by Commissioner Silver's there, second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Reddick, in a further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. See you all on July seventh, twenty twenty-five at nine thirty.